Okay, six o'clock, uh, call meeting order, the first order of business is.
By the United States of America and to the Republic of Brazil, since one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We can't think of many useful words.
Reviewing the minutes of September six. Second motion is second, any further discussion? Seeing all was in favor. It's everybody, um, members reports, will say Lindsay.
I'll be.
And I am always facing it, so nothing from. Uh, come in this report.
Uh, last week there was a training down in Portland, it was put on by our law firm. Uh, it's pretty much a biannual legal update with all the legislation that passed through. Very informative and please the two members of our planning board went to, so, um, that's always encouraging when those kind of technical board, they have a lot of liability, uh, want to attend those, so. Uh, good news there, the water district is proposing a rate increase, uh, that's two ten percent increases. Uh, year one and then year two, that's going to be here at the office on the third of October of six o'clock. And the reason for this increase is a rising operational cost, uh, and there's a post seven hundred foot line replacement on Main Street. It includes trucking under or over the mill stream under the bridge. Uh, kind of off to be closed on October fourth, that's Wednesday of your next meeting, so that we can go to MMA's conference, uh, down in Augusta. And then continuing to work on a new resident visitor welcome pack. And if you have anything in there that you would like to be prioritized or included in the content, just let me know and I'll do it if it's not already in there. Planning board meeting is scheduled for October twelfth, uh, TIF committee is actually canceled for next week, so that's going to be an October meeting. The, uh, bridge on the rail trail coming over the mill stream out behind York's area. Uh, it's gonna be rebuilt this weekend, the state came in, cleared all that out, uh, yesterday. And so that's ready to go, they're looking for volunteers to help, so if you wanted to volunteer park at Wolf Street Parking Lot, uh, Saturday morning at eight, uh, can be there, the more quicker it will be. Your twenty twenty-three taxes were due yesterday, we've collected eighty-three point eight percent, uh, which is right exactly where we were last year, so that's good. Uh, interest rates continue to move upward, and so we are. We did move yesterday a million of my CD account into a five month CD at five and a quarter percent, so, um, that's good news there, we're continuing to keep an eye on rates and everything's pretty short term. Uh, so we'll do what we can do there to make our money workforce in the current environment. Uh, leans on unpaid sewer charges from last year at this time, we'll go on tomorrow, this thirteen accounts there. The new rate of waste management, so that is now taking full effect, there were four days in last month's. Check that were at the new rate, that check was one hundred and fifty-one thousand four forty-four for one month. Uh, so at this rate, you know, we're looking at one, 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 two for this year and next year even more than that, we're trending about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars ahead of where we were this time last year, so. Uh, that's good news there in terms of revenues, the library trustees, their meeting is scheduled as regular next Thursday, thirty. Um, the malex are organizing the community mural unveiling, that is the TIF funded mural, it's proposed for the town square, it's nearing completion. They're gonna install it the week before October fourteenth and Saturday morning, October fourteenth at ten o'clock, they will unveil it and the malex will be providing refreshments after the fact. Um, and so everybody's invited to that, um, and that's how it runs as a TIF slash parks committee sponsored event. Uh, meeting with FEMA next week to conduct the three level review of damage incurred on Maine's earth, that was a bad rainstorm, which primarily, uh, four or five floodways and then unique dock. So rather than file against our insurance, I'm just thinking FEMA, um, and hopefully get that replaced at the landing.
Have they finalized the new flood zone mapping that they started? When is with a.
I have no clue, don't forget who's responsible for that. Federal government.
Yes, so will there be someone from the federal government here that can answer those questions?
No, this is this is strictly a zone.
Oh, FEMA.
Yeah, or teams, whatever they call it. Um, and that's just for this, and this is like a fifteen minute call where I'll explain to them what I have for a lot of season, that they're gonna do some advanced work, but what they kind of over to the states. Uh, brands team. Completely silent. So, no, and I haven't heard any, they asked for feedback on maps and everything, and I haven't heard anything since, that's probably been.
Who did they ask for feedback on maps?
They asked me to take a look at it for accuracy. But the actual implementation and overlay on your live maps, if you will, is a long ways out. So. Uh, the fire chief initiated, um. An arrangement with the Harold Alphon Center for the Advancement of Maine's Workforce, this is a fifty percent now fifty percent, uh, reimbursed program for quality training and college courses. Up to twelve hundred dollars per trainee, this can be of assistance when we're trying to get firefighters trained up, the appropriate things. Well, that offers tuition assistance, course assistance, books and things like that, um, so I signed that MOA with them last week, there's really nothing that's required of us, but it gives opportunities, not just firefighters, but any municipal employee less. Board of you five, uh, with training opportunities, so this room there, um, it's all about the workforce development. Uh, the fire protection agreement with Mercer expires at the end of this year, I have sent that request over to them and their board to ask that they have feedback and post changes upon that, and then we'll bring that back so that we can initiate. I guess the formal offer, um, to them for next year, our call volume seems initial to be. In the ballpark where we're at or below in terms of percentages, that seventeen percent threshold, so, um, that's going to be something that chief and the officers are going to be taking a look at. Our expense numbers and whatnot, so, and we have to keep in mind that that's based on budget, not actual expense, so. Uh, Pike is going to come again next week, if everything goes well, to give a, a formal proposal to resolve the crack in the water road. So that's good, heard from O'Conners, uh, they're the folks that we're buying the new plow truck from, and that should be here in the next two weeks. Uh, so we'll, we'll cut that check tonight and hold on that, that was not supposed to be here until the end of the year, so that's good for us. And then the preliminary intersection work for the intersection right here by the bank and post office, they're going to be here October second, third and fourth, and they're replacing the. Yeah, the basis of all light fixtures, um, and adding the ones that come up, so you can expect significant delays that Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday.
But yeah. Six there, and I said connection on September twentieth, general warrant number seventeen.
That we approved general warrant number seventeen, the amount of four hundred and forty-six thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second motion is second, any further discussion on that?
So O'Connor one, what vehicle is this?
That's the new plow truck.
New plow truck?
With all the.
And hard cross chemicals, chemicals, what's, uh?
Uh, hard crosses, uh, let's say it's fifty fifty chance of calcium for public works, or no, it's actually.
We're two separate, I think we're two separate, it's hard crossing the.
Yeah, there's, uh, the hard cross expenses sewer for this luxury.
Eighty things a little bit.
Uh, that's that eight, and he's been doing a lot of our work right at the shop.
What is Jensen Baird?
They're a locker, so they, there's a residual bill from waste management. That was pulled out of their S grow, this, the, uh. Bills discovering in road showing zoning violation. And then a small amount, actually, there was a small fire response.
What do we have, Catan Analytical Services do for us?
They do our, uh, wastewater test.
Okay.
Ron's reading.
That's rail pro related expense, so about the grant, and we'll get ninety percent investment from the state and the ten percent of the company.
At the robot farm.
Robot farm is the balance of their society.
That's right.
Yeah.
So there's twenty questions on waste management service.
That is the, uh, balance of the S grow that they deposited for their application. They gave us, uh, ten thousand dollars to profit our expenses, and so we give them back the balance.
Good, has any further discussion? Seeing none, all was in favor? And that's it. Uh, Scott connection on September twentieth, uh, airport warrant number nine.
Okay, I. I'm going to be approved, uh, the airport warrant in the amount of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Second motion is second, any further discussion?
Yeah, why are there two, what are the two different buildings, I mean, you've got.
You can take.
Almost, I feel like what? Why do they have that over there, do they always have that?
We always have that as for resale, that's what we make our money at the airport.
Okay, and so how often are we spending this, like, twenty-five thousand dollars on fuel?
Uh, as needed, it's hard to tell, um.
They're selling it.
So, right, right, we sell it just barely at a minimum of sixty cent markup on the gallon.
Okay.
And then the reason these two deliveries came in together, they don't, uh, is because of the solid days we ran a few special drug pilots.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but couldn't we save money if we bought like new later tanks or something like that, or they? I remember something about like how often I have to come or something, that is often as more money.
Yeah, so because we can't take a full tank of truck, then we've got a split load fee with that's up, but the environment for buying. This type of fuel has just been terrible because you can't get it from the folks that we used to, and now you're just paying premium, but all that was start. Ish, that's from just. Ground damage, so. Anyway, uh, so it's just kind of get sticky, so the price has gone up because we're not going to eat it. But the problem with expanding the fuel capacity at the airport is that that's a revenue generating project, and then the federal government should be money, I think, for three years after that. Because you're supposed to be using that revenue to put towards there.
So there's like one hundred stuff, okay, someone go, they might have got. Race car, can you fill up there right there?
Uh, I'm not allowed to tell you that, you can or you can't.
In the.
We had a. Open, uh, and we have a part, I love. Getting up there. You're sad. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all was in favor? So everyone?
Special action on September twentieth store.
I'm going to approve the store in the amount twenty-seven thousand seven hundred eighty-two and eighty-seven cents.
Second motion is second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all was in favor? Is everyone? Public comment?
I have one thing. Fire. Uh, this is more. Informational. Cause there's more coming down the road in the future. But the state has been nearly a decade. Trying to put together what they call LoZAP, a length of service or work program. Or paid call for some volunteer firefighters. Okay, so. Every year the, this, it gets, it's a bill at the legislature, and. Hardly ever gets, finding has now gotten through, if I need to get a minimal amount of funding. And right now, the funding only covers the administrative side of the program. If we can continue to beat on people like Brad here, et cetera, eventually get the programs funded, that creates a. Retirement plan. For, um, firefighters, not. Yeah, and not our two full timers, but. The, the paid call force involves here, right, it's probably not going to amount to a lot of money. You have this whole vesting process, there's a whole point process, and others go to more calls, go to more training, go to more meetings, you get more points. The state would give you more money, and it is probably your thing to get vested, it's, it's a lot. To take into account, but the reason I'm bringing it to you is. Playing on in the future, whether it's this coming budgeted year, maybe not, but. At least the following one, the town also has an opportunity to participate in funding that. And, you know, we might come and ask someday for ten or twenty thousand a year, or some number to put towards that, it's a, it's a reward. Thing, it's an incentive thing, it's, uh, it's probably the right thing to do thing. And, uh, it's just sort of now getting off the ground, it's going to a lot of push behind it, main fire chiefs association. Um, may say federation firefighters, they're the ones that are on the board, the administrator of the program is, uh. Used to be called AIG, but now it's Core Brook Financial, Cold Brook Financial, Core Brook Financial, AIG. So they administer the program, it's just getting started. I think there's nothing stopping us from signing off right now, but what we'd be after you for is look, the feds may fund some of this someday, the state is going to fund some of this someday, the individual can fund it, the town also has an opportunity to contribute. And it may be, we're always looking for ways to bolster the ranks, it may be one thing that the town can do to help bolster the ranks and. There's a lot more details that we need to figure out, work out, but I want to put it in your mind now, that there's a program out there that's struggling to get going, struggling to get funded. And that we may be at the town in. The near future to ask for your support.
Thank you.
It may. Won't be next week, won't be next week, but it'll be a ways, isn't it?
Uh, anything else for public comment? Okay, see you. Uh, discussion action on, uh, bias of the game breathing apparatus.
Oh, we got a grant from FEMA, where ninety-five percent of the expense is covered by. FEMA, and we have a five percent local share. Uh. What we have for price right now is below the full allowance, the grant amount. Fire department is going to ask you to authorize the full amounts, we can, so we can use that full amount of grant money, and they have all the national equipment accounts. Uh, what they have done is they've sought pricing out and they are back with. Something that we've seen as a preferred vendor, bird or on protective clothing, uh, out of the P M F, so, all the Friday offices, well, the explanation.
Yeah, this is the A G grant, I've spoken about you guys, it's accepted the award probably a month, maybe six weeks ago, one of the meetings. Now it's to the point, but we've done some research, looked at different packs, different suppliers, on what we can provide, you know, the best equipment with this grant. Um. Strange enough, we looked at the three top providers of Scott's, a three R product, it is our MSA, the different products, same thing with different, different company, and then a dragon, which is. Not quite as common as the other two. Uh, we had them in the station for probably six, eight weeks, everyone tried different packs on, a couple of different ideas, at the end, the MSA was the better one, they seemed to step up with technology. One of the biggest problems the fire department has is once you get your mask sealed on, you're breathing air through the SGA. You can't really communicate with people, you usually hear awful noises. Um, MSA, what they've done is they've actually built the speaker into the mask and an external speaker onto the harness. So you actually have a speaker built onto the harness of the pack, so when you're talking, you're talking through a speaker. It gives her a lot of the safety risk when you're trying to talk to some outside of fire, uh, just because you can't communicate with them. And that kind of pushed the MSA to the top on everything, Scott is a name brand that's seen everywhere. Um, if you watch any fire TV shows, you probably see him out there, now they are, they are common one, but they haven't changed their stuff in. Twenty-five years, you took a pack off the truck, which are getting close to obsolete, you looked at what they do once. Uh, other color, the very, very similar operating system. Um, you know, the big problem we've had in Scott is for some reason to use up triple A batteries, we change them frequently, unfortunately, by by the case. Um, and we go through very rapidly, and they say they've changed this, again, style, they're a rechargeable lithium ion battery. Uh, the good thing is the. Batteries in the packs have fifteen year warranties. Um, two providers, probably all have to pay, and the third supplier was Scott. Uh, the one we do most of the business with over the last, obviously, five years, just look at the history, there's version on protective. Um, and so they have to actually come up with the best price, um, so you know, I'm going to come to you guys for that, and maybe you'll leave it because they actually end up at a price. But total. Yes, the minutes, so this includes a, a fill station and compressor also, because these models, they're up to six thousand PSI, our current system is at twenty-two hundred. So we needed to replace these compressors, so that sometimes we have to jump stop because it is thirty-five years old. Uh, but it is currently getting us by rate this minute, so the total package is almost two hundred thousand dollars. The grant come in at two hundred and five thousand, and the reason we're looking at getting the total amount. Is the grants pretty specific, uh, the things I listed in there, which is the packs, the spare balls, the max. Um, that has to be purchased as the, uh, grant is written. The little things that I, I missed as I did the application was. The brackets, the size of the cylinders have changed, so the brackets of the trucks don't fit. Um, so we're replacing them with the, if you want to help extra money. Uh, FEMA does allow if there is excess funds to spend off like, but when you, so it wouldn't be a problem buying that stuff out of the same grant at the same patch rate.
Compared to that, it was less money and another bunch, doesn't usually work.
No, that's, you guys don't typically bring us that. Not sure I've ever seen that.
Oh, we try.
Does, you know, we're looking at caring for the warranty?
Yes.
And this says the grand amount was one ninety-five.
Well, that's what would have been paid out of that. The total grant amount. Uh, the total purchase price, sorry, would be two oh five four oh seven thirty-six, the grant amounts five, so the ninety-five percent and our five percent is ten two seventy-one. If we maximize the grade, yes. If we want to piece out and not do that, take the hose rail out, add in the warranty, then that's what's on your paper.
This guy said, he saw no need for the hose rail.
What's that?
It says here that. It's down, he saw no need for the hose rail, but do you, I mean, for the hose rail?
Well, we, we currently have was, it's not necessarily a hose rail, right now we got it wrapped up on a hook. Um, it's a high pressure supply line, so, um, what that would provide, if we had, say, a fire in town, we had other towns in. It provides fifty feet of high pressure holes, but we didn't want to fill bottles on their trucks. Uh, if we don't have that, there's no way of actually filling that, so, I'll use Scally as an example, because they're one of the regulars that are here at town. They would be going back to Scally, you know, fill their bottles on their trucks. So for the cost, uh, and the fact that they're regular covers that, it seems like a wise investment, sure.
Yep, we're only paying five percent of it. And everything, five percent discount. Five. That's your, might as well use up the.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
The fire would like you to make a motion to authorize the purchase of S C D A equipment from Bertrand, Texas, fully in an amount of up to two hundred and five thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and thirty-six cents, including a local share of up to ten thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. So. Motion is second, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all was in favor, and that's it. Thank you, thank you, that was fantastic, that you were able to get that.
They, they, there was only sixteen state of Maine awardees this year, sixteen, uh, we were the fifth of six bias. Uh, in the, in the state, so it was thirteen, and the only one in Somerset, so, who goes to you guys? Chief, not you guys, chief that are aware, you know, I failed to hear them all. It's, it's. Very well appreciated.
Can I ask the question?
Yeah.
How much is a new compressor?
Well, we did, actually, we've broken down into three different companies, again, the same companies we use, and then, actually, they have a different license. Um, the compressor, when I say compressor, there's a little more to it, you do have a compressor that's compressing, yeah, that's designed for humans to, yeah, so it's not your typical NAB compressor. And then there's actually another portion to it, which we call a fin station, is where the cylinders come off the airbags and they, we need to fill, um, so it is a high pressure system. The lowest price was around fifty thousand. The highest was eighty-six, and we're at like the fifty-sixth on the compressor. We kind of took the middle of the road because that provider was giving us a better operation than everything else, so overall, we're still the, the lower provider. But it's just the type of system, unfortunately, these compressors are expensive.
So you did get a compressor with this.
Yeah, that's it, so.
Okay, I.
The last compressor, it's thirty, chief mentioned, it's almost thirty-five years old, it's still running. And, uh, it was actually bought by waste management. Nobody knows that.
I have a question, I was already going to answer, what do we have for our estimated turnaround time on this?
The airbags, they said they could have them here and fit tested and up and running in four weeks, the compressor, it's probably six.
It's not, it's fast for.
So.
Yeah, and, and the packs don't do us any good without the high pressure compressor, but it was all good news compared to. But the last few years, right?
What do you guys have to do with all the old stuff?
Well, our, our goal is actually come back to this board, and I think we've spoke to it briefly in the past, um, we've kind of reached out to the vocational school, the high school. And they're slowly starting, Kelsey was involved in this, she was there actually when they came in. Um. They're starting this fall, they've started the E and T class, and by next fall of twenty fourteen, they're going to do the firefighting one and two programs. So people will be graduating, I suppose, and our goal at the fire department, and I know Richard, I did some word also, is to donate the packs they pray for training.
Yeah.
Uh, if there's something wrong, it's a training thing, just donate actually to vocational school, to get them up and running with that program for next year.
You, you won't make any money selling them because.
Well, I actually not to, I was going, I was just curious.
They're, they're out of, they're out of N F A compliance since twenty twenty-four, so, which is the whole point, right, uh, to do what we do.
But they use the app, that training, it's, it gives you the basics of how they work, how they use them. And that was kind of our point for the fight about, I mean, I do, I spoke to Richard briefly a few times about it, because definitely on board.
Yeah, that would be fantastic.
Yeah.
Yeah, what a lot to do.
And hopefully over the next few years, we get one or two out of the schools, they know how much a fair job be, would be great.
Yeah. Okay. Test, I'm moving forward here, uh, discussion action on park development.
Uh, so this is follow up to last meeting, so I'm taking about handling part, uh, so we've got, uh, Janice Mailer was continuing to just. Uh, Dan, Nick, and Sam, they can look at everything, working on her, you know, the little platform that she will, uh, trying to keep things moving on that, it's also basically what it's sign. We want, uh, fixed to the main sign right there, we're going to work on the verticals and that, but, um, that's the, you know, that section. On the other section of the building, um, we had talked at the last meeting about its location, its trees being respectful of the, the. Large pine area, as well as the butters and whatnot, um, and so I went out, uh, and actually with me. Um, to meet with a prospective contractor, trying to get their ideas as to how this is going to be best. Um. Located and situated for its use and for minimizing the impact on a butters and nature and everything else. So this, a, a location proposed, uh, near the right off the corner parking area, and then there's one set a little bit further back. Uh. Good and bad for each of them, the one up, it towards the parking lot really leaves us with a lot to be desired in terms of a location, set back from the neighbors. Um, and then ideal access to and from, um, the, the trail access. By setting it back a little bit further, it's going to allow us a larger buffer with the next door neighbor, uh, there's a mobile home located right next door. Um, it provides us with better access to the trail, um, and then. Freeze up, I, what I would argue is space for community gathering or other events might take place, um, there, and, and situational, I think it's more attractive. The downside to that is that there are six trees in a small cluster, which are pictured in your packet, that we need to be removed. And so normally I would have just gone ahead and took up six trees. And be done with it, very likely the cost of cutting the six trees will be paid back to us, uh, from the value of those six trees, um. They're just left in the middle, right? I think the best case scenario is to remove those six trees and locate the building further back. For the purpose of the building, and it's not really going to have an impact on the area around, it'll also keep the next neighbor a little bit happier. And one of the other things that I noted, when we were looking at the sites, uh, is that we do need, we need buffer with our neighbors. To me, that's like Christmas tree type spot. Uh, and then also along the left side, with, and it's part of Janice's long-term plan, but for a, a. More solid buffer between the trail access and what's going to be super preserved. Um, so that's kind of where we're at, and the fact that my recommendation to you would be to locate that building instead of that. Will require the maintenance.
And might as well, right, we were there discussing, but it certainly makes more sense to push it back and. Thought of not putting the building in the ideal spot, just because, so. A grow of trees, if you will, uh, doesn't really make sense, you know, the building is going to be there forever, uh, trees can be replaced in this case, uh. And I actually do like the idea of adding the buffer trees, so that your next take back is.
Uh, it's going to look just like.
Uh, well, I don't know.
Well, I mean, like, from this picture, though, is. Like, I went there today just to see where this was, like, you can see the trailer, click, there was a day right there, like, I don't see the trailer here, so I don't know if I'm.
That's a, that's a.
Okay, so are we talking about putting trees on that side to buffer the trailers well? Yeah, because there needs to be a significant amount of planting on that side because that.
So that side, I thought that picture there was kind of the opportunity for us, if you're on the other side with the mobile home, that is, was an obvious no brainer, no matter where we locate this building. We're not going to be irresponsible for that.
Yeah.
But we, no matter what, I think this project will include plants and trees on that property. Fact, the opportunity on the left side of the proposed development towards the, the preserve space is where I still think there's substantial opportunity to create additional buffer.
Right, that's going to keep the general traffic of, of our. Building area and our room. By putting that proper there, it makes it a clear corridor when you leave the parking lot, that this is where you're supposed to go, uh, you're not going to come over by our building.
So basically, taking down the six trees, put building where it should go ultimately in the long run, so that I have issues down the road, planting.
Yeah, more than twice as many trees.
As we go, and we can always add.
Okay, just want to make sure that we're taking something out, we're putting something back, so that.
That was part of the discussion.
Yeah.
Was, it's a public when we had that.
It's not going to be a one to one can be replaced, it just, it's not going to work that way to get what we're taking, what we're putting back in, but you know, the goal is to obviously put more than we can take.
Okay, and one thing that came up at the last meeting that honestly I hadn't thought of, that this is kind of going to be a municipal building, so. Thought of that, this is kind of going to be a municipal building, so you guys mentioned you brought up like a perspective, like, uh, contractor out there, like. Regardless of timeline, like, I think that we need to be very evident that we are following our own rules on bids and everything like that, because this isn't. You know, a sportsman's club like building, it's not this, since this is a town building, we are, it's going to come back and bite us, and if we don't do this, all like. Out to bid and do it the right way, that's, that's the thing I want to make sure that we put out there, um.
So my challenge to the board, and I already issued it. A couple days ago, yes. Uh. Finding available contractors that all, that I can go get price from. And I'd be happy to send them a pass and do that, but that's the.
We can't not send out a bid though, like, I feel like it has to go up.
Yes, but I sent other communications by people who are very well connected to the community and beyond, and I got zero back. So if you can provide me with names of people that are qualified, that can do this for us, then I will do all of that and.
So how did you go out there?
Pardon?
Who did you go out there with?
I went out with Nixon, because they were, they're, they're local, they've had work for us in the past, and they were going to be here in two days.
So when we typically bid something and want to go out, like. A news and different thing, like a newspaper, how does that typically go, it's like.
When I bid, I typically direct mail. Or email, depending upon the type. And then I post a website and I post to a municipal association, and the bidding sources will. Track that, help people pay those guys to watch those kind of postings, and then they attract, so. Um, you'll see it later with the dock purchase, you've got two local vendors who are reasonable, and then you've got the one that got fetched out. And the two that were local, if you will, um. Those are direct mails, I was able to direct mail, and I talked with them, able to say, hey, can you fulfill our needs, can you do it in a timeline? Answer was yes, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I have a huge problem with us, just like, I made a phone call to this person, they, you know, they did it because so and so didn't like, we can't do it that way, like.
So the original proposal was a complete steel building. Which involves cranes and a whole bunch of other stuff, so we consulted Nickerson about a wood frame building. With steel siding, so it would look the same to the outside eyes, uh, but considerable cost difference.
But why are we going to a specific contractor already that hasn't been brought to bid?
Well, it wouldn't be right for me to bid it, or for me to.
That's what I mean, but like, we can't, it's like we've already decided we're going to, we just can't do that, it's a municipal building, like, we have to follow like the rules, and we're not doing that right now, we're just not.
We, nobody said that we weren't, I'm telling you that we went out there with a contractor. And we had that site visit with them, and I don't do that, but if you. We, we need to understand the current economic environment. And the labor environment, and if you can't provide me with a name of that.
But Richard, we made these rules up, I feel like we're making excuses to make something fit into a, we want it to fit right.
I'm telling you that a, a packet will go out. A packet will go out because of the bid specs that we are looking for. Because we also want to manage a certain portion. Of the project ourselves, we know we have someone that's going to produce very well on concrete, and I'm not bidding concrete up. I have a local resident that's going to do it, he's going to cut us to the front of the line, and he's going to give it to us at cost. I'm not going to bid that out, there are other services that just don't get that out because of timeliness, availability and price. And. I will put the specs together and I will send it out. My ultimate goal is to work with our local business people that need the business here.
And you know what, we typically want to do that too, but we need to see all the bids that come in so that we can make that choice.
Right, I got a question. Time of bidding, you're talking about, have trees down, planting trees, doing the concrete, or is one bid going to all?
Uh, I mean, the, the trees are totally separate, I mean, the tree left.
I guess, what I'm saying is, is if you do it all, that's going to greatly reduce. People that can do the work.
Oh, well, yeah.
You know what I'm saying, so I, I get what you're saying. But the next question is, when do we want to do this? When, when do we want to start?
Well, I agree with what I'm having for this one here, not that that is.
Right, so I'm telling you right now that there's absolutely no one, but that. You know, they're targeted or. That's going to do, be able to knock some, everybody's smart, anybody that's worth a damn. Isn't. Going to be able to do this job.
For this, and I'm not, I'm just saying.
It's all, I'm saying.
Yeah. But that's where we keep getting ourselves in troubles because we're saying expediency this fast and convenience. But we're not following all the rules we've put in place, so like, we're opening ourselves up to a bunch of liability of. People saying, I didn't know about this, I didn't get contacted, so what happens if someone does something, you don't know that they do that now? And they're like, no one ever called me because I wasn't on Richard's five listed. We did, this is a municipal building, this is not like.
Your statement. Initiated with a presumption that we were cutting corners and that we weren't going to do that. That's exactly implied, maybe it wasn't directly what was said.
It's not following how we do it, that we said we're going to do it, that's what I'm saying.
We have a policy, and I will move forward with it unless the board gives me direction, otherwise. To date. Everything that you have for policy, I have been compliant with.
Exactly.
And this appearances is all public pressure on the board for trying to get things done for the town. There are a lot of things that with COVID and then now the aftermath, which is an excuse of the labor market. But this board has time and time again set that policy aside, itself imposed policy. In this, in the name of expediency or efficiency. We will move unless the board tells me otherwise, we will move in the way that we move. At, in the same way that the next thing did as well. Okay, but we also know, and have experienced, that bidding things isn't always the best way.
And I think that Nickerson thing is a question and answer. Right, so we.
Right, right. Is there a free, is there a free consultation?
Right, I'm giving you advice. Correct, exactly. I mean, as currently we approach, uh, to this Portland's global approach with a steel. Complete steel frame, right, fairly expensive. Uh, was brought to attention that there was substantial cost savings in going with a wood frame filler. So we're having someone price a wood frame, so we, once we determine what the frame would be. It could be put out to bid, or a packet be put, couldn't, couldn't put together two put out to bid, but you couldn't put up a packet for a steel building and a wood building. If you put something up to bid, it needs to be apples to apples, right? What do you say this is?
Last meeting though, I thought that was a metal building.
Just kind of up to.
Right.
Yeah. But that was all based on the metal building that was already like looked at and done, I guess.
No, neither of the motive wasn't that narrow.
Yeah, no, because that was the discussion we had, the arguments that you're going to, that you're going to spend this much on that, and we said, no, that's only to spend up to. So there's nothing, we don't even have the quote yet. To know.
There was discussion about the size of the building and the size of the building.
But it was all big time metal building, but now that's changing, that we're.
Advice from the contractor.
Right, it's cheap.
And just go.
And there's an even smaller market of people that can construct a steel frame. Certainly not locals.
So not to drag this up, but while we're on that, so if we put it up to bid, first facts. And we get five bids, the lowest bids as a candidate for two years, that would be. I, I don't know the policy.
So that will be.
So is that going to be in the backside?
You know, right.
I mean, so we're going to be in the same boat if the lowest one is. So we put it up, we see what we get, and we go from there.
Right, because we had put out, what the heck project was, we put up to bid, recently. And it didn't come before the board. But, oh, Obama's, he brought the cross call, right? And the budgetary estimate on that total length of engineering was under three hundred thousand, and so I got a bid for seven hundred. Okay, seven hundred thousand, and then one bidder on replacing this bottomless cover, so. You know. It, I just set it aside, we were bidding December.
I didn't, what, what is the? Limit on bids, like, what's the number where you have to put? You know.
It's five thousand, is that?
Ten, right now is the board's threshold, but there's flaws in your policy that the, the board is having, right? It's a guide.
So why? At all.
I. Days will, ten thousand dollars is, I mean, you, you can spend.
Quick.
Right.
Like.
Is there any way you can change that number?
Yes.
We, we did that. And we looked at them all. So sorry, we, we looked at those numbers and.
I don't know if you looked at them, but I know the policies was.
You reviewed that.
Yeah. But again, it ultimately falls at the woman's discretion. You are elected by the taxpayers, so you're about to speed for them.
Right, I just, I, you could change the legality of the ten thousand dollar ones, I think that's. Me, technically should be putting almost everything. Uh, you know.
But. It is written that you don't have to.
Right.
For anything.
But we also want to make sure that we're not making it look like we pick and choose what we decide to do and what we don't, and we always come up with a god it done faster excuse for us. Because I think a lot of people see that as like, we're characating to certain people and like, and I think that is the. General consensus what a lot of people are thinking because that's. We don't have any way to say we're not doing that because we're not following the policy, and I think that that's. Where it lies, like, we can go the exact same thing, but I feel like we have to take the steps to get there to make that same decision. I feel like that's the fair.
Always going to be that Dawson, but I don't.
I, I don't think it's Dawson, I think that it's like just, I mean, this is a municipal building, like, I feel like we should just stay up. Why, why we just fought, we don't have a good reason not to follow it, like, why not put it out to bid? If it shaves a couple weeks off of the timeline, like, no one's going to die over that, like, so.
Right.
Yeah, but I'm just.
So like.
All I was saying is that I wanted to make sure we did put it out to bid and we didn't just. Someone said they do it, so we did it.
Should we put the concrete out to bid? Because we have a contractor that's offering to do it at cost. Uh, and not paying him any labor, so should that be put out?
My guess would be if we're going to go with them because of that, that there aren't going to be any bids that come in cheaper than that, so why wouldn't we? Because we're still going to put out to them, so why wouldn't we do it just so that there's like the appearance of transparency of us doing it above board for everybody?
That's not fair to the other bidders.
Right.
Asking them to bid something they have zero chance winning.
Well, unless they come in like. Yeah. But if they decide they want to get the business with the town or something like that, they might come in as low as whoever this person is, because the person's not going to lose money doing it, there might be someone else who wants to get or.
Well, not lose money, just stop thinking. Why don't I? The individual doesn't mind it, they lose money in the project, I think the board gives them the things that has.
Is greatly, I know that.
But don't we also?
And it's probably the best concrete work you get. I mean, there's maybe.
But we can't sit, we have, there's other people in the town who probably do concrete too, we cannot make it functions as a town, as an individual, it's still needed to set up, but we can't just shout, say that.
Awesome.
It could, I'm just like, why don't we just want to do it like?
So, uh, my recommendation to the board would be to take action on the proposed locations destruction. Which impacts what we would develop with the spec in location, because there'll be underground trenching, this is trenching required. To the buildings, the location does matter, so A to locate the building and remove trees, one over remove trees, and then on an extra agenda, we'll have a discussion action on our policy.
Question on trees, how big are the trees?
John Lynch did that once, and it was this big.
Oh. Now, it's not that, it's not that. Biggest one, it might be twenty, sixty inches around, and they're probably coming in about a hundred and twenty foot up there.
Yeah, I, I know.
Oh, uh, yeah, you have a question, fire away.
I have a couple, and first of all, I, as a taxpayer, I would say I agree with Lindsay. Everything should be above board. Right from the get-go. And it should be out there, and. That's it, I, I have to say I agree with Lindsay on that, but I wondered also. How lo, how large did you say those trees were, and what is their actual proximity? I know you said they weren't that close, but, but I'm just wondering what the actual proximity is to the. The tree that were, the main tree that is like the.
Oh, they're far, they're far away, there.
They are.
Yeah, they're on the opposite ends of the property, these are on the bar.
Like, it's only over the corner, it's okay, yeah, it's like behind there, oh.
And, okay, one other question, um. Have, uh, did Nickerson give a price on the steel? And wood frame and steel building, or is?
I don't think it's come back yet.
It hasn't come back.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Anything else? Also, right now, we're just looking for a motion to move on the trees themselves.
Just.
Yeah, to have it removed, yeah.
Yeah, I know that we removed the six trees, um, but I would say with that motion, but we do also plan to plant other trees along. You know, we're taking out some, we're planting stuff, wait, how do we put that in as that? I want to make sure that we are putting in the buffers and doing those other trees.
So there's a motion, a second, a second, uh, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I'm abstaining.
One second. Uh, you need anything else on that? Okay.
We don't have, not with abstaining, I tried to do that once, you said we had everyone's.
We're supposed to, okay, yeah.
Maybe that.
I have done my diligence to walk out there myself and check it out, and feeling slightly uncomfortable about like not definitely knowing the size of the building and all that, and. So I, I just feel worried about it.
No, and I.
I'm happy to tackle it if you need like a strong, yeah, or no, for me, but.
Yeah, I just know that when, in the past, like, I was supposed to. Disclose that, so I just want to clarify on that one.
Okay. Okay, uh, discussion action on Osula Park dog system purchase.
So this project was already approved and already funded through the chip, I believe the amount here is up to seventy five thousand dollars for the total project. Um, there were bid specs of an O. Um, and I directly reach for. Three of those submitted. Who else submitted? Three of those submitted, and then the fourth vendor from Westport Island also submitted, so we have proposals. Mainly dogs, the dog guys, Great Northern Dogs, and then Chesterfield Associates and corporate. Uh, the. All the bidders are responsive, as far as I'm concerned, uh, you had the entire bid submission from. All of them sent to you on Friday electronically. And so. It's your pleasure. Questions?
They all have the same specs?
Yeah, the, the variation in some of them, I think it's very good on the dogs, because the size of their standard dog. Wasn't what we were asking for, it's not what most people offer as a standard size. So they reached out in a sense that, uh, they could offer up a different. Dimensional. Second, it's been layout, and I said yes. Because obviously, we're trusted, so they achieved the goal without. Staying right, right?
What's the difference on this one?
There it's. We get a decade thousand. So theirs had a lot to do with the decking construct material.
Like Great Northern, which is a galvanized way, uh, and a removable top.
So David, sorry, Great Northern did not submit in their initial bid, they did not submit the cost of the stairs. So I'm back to them after the fact. Candidly, I used the thirteen steps that was calculated by another vendor, the only vendor that conducted the site visit to get my step number, thirteen steps, and then I bounced back to them to say, hey. It's a thirteen step. Could you break that up for me for ballpark? So in addition to their other proposals, the sixty four seventy eight. Well, less satisfied is what would be added onto each of their suggestions.
Who's going to be moving these in here?
So that's, uh, honestly, it's a future discussion, what my thought was in this was that we would ask them to propose this product on the whole cost. Of installing them, A, so that we can watch it. We, other works could want it. Uh, we do have the equipment if we want to do it, um, but also so we can get the price of it in dollars, and we can, we can watch it to move that way.
So I just, yeah, because that can be one thing to consider on price, I mean, once five thousand or five thousand dollars more, but it's way easier to. Take out, you know what I'm saying?
So they're, they're all about the same to install, pull up some out of the cost equation, and I mean, you're looking at. This is the first time, so it's a little different, but, you know, forty six hundred bucks, that probably, you're looking at. Six gritty, a bunch of eroded to put in and take out. Both dogs. Right. Three in the spring, three in the fall.
So right, dog guys have cedar decking. Uh, and that is screwed down? Or removable?
It's removable, every, everything collects in.
So the only person who's blown away actually needs your specs is me and the dogs, which actually is your lowest as well.
Right.
Uh, the, theirs is, uh, fixed, so it's all aluminum, uh, there is no galvanized anything. Uh. Right, and the decking is well, it implements, so it can't float off, I mean, and any removal, it's, it's not going to work.
Yeah. Do you have warranty information between them, I mean. What's the warranty for either one, is that specified at all, or? It's like, once it's in, it's like, eh, don't do it now, yeah. So if anything like that, I just, with the river, with so much debris and stuff coming down, there's a strong, I suppose, it's going to get bad climbed and. It's true, it's crap up, and so. I'm just.
Not really going to get anybody warranty.
Yeah.
So this is, is going to come down and do this little circle thing, so like, something that would better.
Theoretically, yeah.
I guess, my turn. On the river valley. How far up does that go, and how are you going to make those, they're all?
Not sure which one.
Right, so I, I walk down there with a.
Right, till I, I walk down there with a crystal filled boat and. See, I just didn't know, is that? Is it gonna start coming out there, it's like a. Some sort of concrete here.
They, they had a lot of legs on it, and everybody here, so in the picture, you see foot pads on them, uh, so your foot pads. Stabilize, so those foot pads do sink in the water, anybody?
Yeah, but like it's gravel, I mean, it's like.
And that, yes, my parents do, and.
Right.
And it's bitch, uh, and it's a fraction of the size, keeping it straight every year, it's every year is different.
Is that a lot, right, so. It would initially be installed, uh, just like any dog system, uh, it'll settle in, uh. You, it, it's not gonna set there perfectly flat, if that's what somebody's envisioning, it'll go in perfectly flat. Uh, but I'm sure once we've had one or two hot waters, uh, it's gonna shift around, and whether you contract that out to have it adjusted. Or if the town guys adjust it, similar to what they do currently for the dog that's down there, you know, it's the one that's down there, sinks in, and then it gets struck by a boat or something, gets racked off. They have to go down and adjust it, uh, so that's what will happen in this scenario, so one side of it is right hard against the shoreline, uh, where the stairs come down. Uh, the floating dock didn't work because it's permits and the whole process to put concrete in, I'm really end of thing.
Well, so one of the other things that, that an add-on to this was to have eye hooks underneath each of the sections of the dock that would be anchored. To help keep them in place, each section.
Anchor to what?
A pad down.
So, no, a weight, a weight chain, a weight chain is something that goes in and comes out, you can't.
So that's, that's acceptable, but.
Yeah, cause it's been temporary, right, in and out, you can't just.
I just remember in front of like my house, we tried to just soak down in, like that was, I mean, like, and you didn't stop, like it was like that deep, like boom, go in, try to find it, so like, I'm just. That'd be my worry about here, like what, you're gonna be able to cover enough area to get it to stay there and not just underwater and it's completely safe, hey?
Be interesting to see.
I just, I'm being frank, I, I have my doubts on, I don't know how many feet off. Of the.
So you, you've got, uh, reset, that's what we look at here, and then you end up, uh, eighteen feet out, right, cause in nine of those sections?
Yep.
So you're eighteen feet out.
My, I guess my question is, say you get eighteen feet out and a foot just keeps going down, and we can't. I have my doubts on that, that row on group, but it, it's very pond rocks, and it's, it's, uh. It's a pain to keep them level, and if you had twelve feet of silt. On the bottom of the river that we're trying to put a leg down to.
I mean, I. I still have almost a hundred dogs on, uh, river sixteen different ponds. Uh, and I have some that the legs sink in two feet into the mud, I can walk and I will sink to my knee enough, and the dogs stay put.
Okay, you have more experience than I.
I was right, not in the river, the, the river is the side current and debris, uh, as far as it settling in in a dog this size. So, it's hard to tell what party boards are gonna do to it.
So in the mainly docks, when part of the installation doesn't include the weighted pads, is that something that is kind of like, it's not that with the hook on, it's that they go down and anchor to it? Where the pad is what's gonna sit, so the leg's not going down in anyway?
No, I wouldn't say no, so that would, uh, just, uh, chain off the center of the dock to keep the dock from. Shitting or lifting over the top, right, so it's similar to your worn ball setup, if anybody, that's right. Keep it cracking.
I almost wonder if that makes it worse when stuff hits it, like it's, I've, I've seen some big stuff coming down the river, I mean, there's sometimes it's like. A tree and it's coming.
So this leg is three, nine feet. All the way around, so the weight would be probably, I don't know, it depends where they put their brackets on these, uh. A foot behind the legs, so lead edge, uh, and if they're out legs, you know, on the farthest edge, they would be centered underneath, so. I can't say that something couldn't hit them, but they're all, whatever comes is also gonna scratch the legs, right?
Yeah, I think some of these people just have to watch and see what happens, like, this is my biggest concern, be that we spend this money, we put them in, and every year we're spending another like five to six grand, because. Gotten yanked, twisted, slammed, or I guess we just. See where we're at and see what we're gonna keep spending, or if like it goes in and just goes over the hitch, that would be.
Oh, yeah, fire away.
I am wondering, I believe, isn't there a similar dock system? Down in, uh, I know when you, we talked about at Tiff meeting about. You heard the half a golf, um. I think, Richard, you had said there was a similar dock system down in Augusta, I remember. Sunday below here, and I wonder.
But that, the launch dock that we had, what we had, was what they had all, I'm not sure about swimming area.
Okay, I, yeah, you had said there was swimming area, I'm sorry.
Good, I remember that.
Oh, there's some stairs down, I don't know if it's meant for swimming, and a little dock, not by the launch, further down. Where?
I just didn't know if anybody had been down to see how that was constructed, that's all, and what issues they made that had.
I've never seen anything but floaters in the river. Personally, myself, I write a section two of, you know, uh, single shore masters along our, but nothing of this size, I, I've.
And then the docks, they'll stand there, remember?
Yeah, yeah, I think all those contractors, nobody was on level.
And there is a difference between the lake and the reef, as far as.
Yeah.
Possibility.
Very myself, very, just. Our, our original proposal was for floaters, uh, but then due to inability to engineer and put large concrete developments to hold the dock, uh, ruled that out. So this is where we landed.
Not to get way too far off, but in the request, it said that proposers may offer more than one proposal, you may offer an alternate dock system. Suggestion, if the proposer wishes to offer a better and more comfortable option. So, if they wanted a floater or whatnot. I kind of hope that efficient of those ideas, actually.
They've got the best construction and, right, they've got the cheapest. Yeah. It would just be a motion to go with maybe those.
Yes, the thirty-three, one sixty-four, ten slots, the cost of weight pads, so, that's the dock, like you pass.
Just say so much.
There's a motion.
Second.
In a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Yeah, discussion action, uh, regarding public works, permanent opportunities.
Yeah, do we have anything?
So, last meeting, we talked about parks and opportunities for parks, and so this, we've talked about public works opportunities in general, and I guess you're welcome to. But, uh, Matt asked that it be maybe focused more on equipment.
Alright, so we, right, and we, so like roadside mowing, uh, so you want to pick one, right, so we're struggling with that. Uh, but I know often the contractor is doing the work, uh, but we all have seen. Plots in maybe the bidding process, uh. And with the rising cost of that, I don't think even if we had gone with someone else. It would necessarily get the standard that we want, or the. Leave us an ability to be like, hey, can we get this done right now, uh? So in looking at the numbers, uh, the opportunity ship that went in-house, uh, to do that with our own guys. Really seems a bit more. Feasible, uh, and really physically responsible, I, I think, I don't know if those are the right words, uh. So, right, it came down to what equipment we would use to do that, uh, I had me and Del, uh, briefly, uh. He probably, and know more about what we would wanna use, uh, kind of lead us on. What would be the right thing, because our biggest exposures are brush cutting, I mean, we've had a lot of call claims and injuries from chainsaws, and I mean, it's. Just dangerous, and everybody get ready, if you run a chainsaw, you know, that cutting brush is probably like the worst thing to do with a chainsaw. Uh, so to get these guys in a piece of equipment, uh, and have us have the ability to do all this in-house. Certainly makes a lot more sense, uh, the price tag of our high bidder was. Fifty-seven thousand, I think, and that was for two months? Or one?
Forty-eight thousand.
That was the highest bid, what was?
It was a forty-eight thousand, there was a twenty-five thousand, and then there was a ten thousand.
Right, so that's for two months, so if we want more, touch up, or if we want farther back in a certain area. Yeah, or when it gets done, or like, cause none of that is really stipulated in there, right, it's at their discretion, come and do it at their leisure, it's filler work, uh. Opposed to if we were in houses, like, hey, it's got long enough, let's send the guys, they have anything to do today, so it really came down to it. So really, I think that's what they're looking at, is.
Well, the first thing I'll say on the fifty thousand dollar one, a guy probably is gonna show up with a two hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment. And to. A lot, I mean, it, it's a very expensive piece of equipment, um. Low bidder was, I mean, everybody in town has got the equipment that he used, so, um, you get it, you got that. You got fuel, you have operation, you got maintenance, there's a lot to consider. That, I mean, it's, uh, it's a good idea, um. But it is expensive. That's the, your cost savings is, is there, I think in the long term. In as far as cost of equipment versus what you're paying, what you gotta really think about is paying some to drive it. Maintenance, um, all that, cause those things are maintenance.
Yeah, I imagine like chains, blades, all that stuff is gonna be a significant ongoing expense would be, like, yes, I don't know.
Well, you're, you really gotta know back to the bidding process, right, um, the ten thousand dollar market, this guy was. Actually, I forgot that, the lowest bidder was below the whole bidding process, right, technically, you could have. Right, so. There was, I think Mike Ober had said, are we comparing apples to apples, and everybody said, yeah, 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 and. You actually read all the bids, and I was part of that, but they weren't, I mean, if the equipment was ninety years, um. So back to that bidding process and that ten thousand dollar number, um, I think if. They had gone to bid, I think there would have been a lot more conversation, um, back and forth, and we would have had a. Better idea of what we were getting, rather than just, we got a number back and we went to the lowest bit. You know, that was pretty much all we did, um, you know, if that, that bidding thing was higher. Um, you could have asked Nickerson, you could have asked whoever, and they could have talked more about it than. That's to your, so yeah, as far as mowing, you're gonna need a tractor, um. They're expensive, a thousand dollar horsepower, um, is you going rate, um. That's, you know, three D equipment, selling tractors now, so, um. The, the attachments, uh, it's, oh. For, uh, eight foot mower, it's. Ten grand for a cheap, cheap mower, you know, twenty-five for a ten foot, like you, twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, you wrap up. An old cable from a line, power line, you're. It's a lot of work, get them out, you don't bring anything, you rip the mower off, cause they kind of pull off. In the ditch, you didn't see it, you ripped the mower off, to fix it, bearings every year, depending on who's driving it, I know. If you pay a hundred thousand dollars for tractor, and you drive it, you take care of it, um, the guy you're. And just, you know. That's the mission, your operator, um, in and out of traffic, insurance.
Um, do you think more is the way to go, so I see the state, uh, today, right, cause they are doing.
That would be there is probably a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar thing, right, but that's a four-year payback, five-year payback.
But there are, there are things that do their own.
I have. Cost me a two thousand.
That actually makes sense for them, that would be my question, is one or other team's doing it?
So I don't know exactly what other teams do, I do know that a lot of other teams do do it, certainly, the minute it's a large town, um.
I think it makes sense, I feel like the more we can do in-house, the better, and so I'm like in favor.
You're gonna do the equivalent of multi-use, you know, you know this stuff, something that we're not just gonna use for that, you know, I do the snowblowing in the winter. Type thing, that tractor is obviously smaller, it's not like, is there something we could look into to try to get this gonna cover?
Right.
More than one job function for us, so that it's not just, we're not choosing it for that, that's back for our buddy, if we're spending the money.
A tractor, is it a mid-sized excavator with head on it, I just, I don't know these things.
Well, and then when they do wrap up something and they hit something like, it's one thing when you do it, cause you can take it apart, fix it on the spot, do it like, we've got town employees, they can't, they can't. We've gotta wait to see when we can get in to get it. I don't know, I just, with that type of, doing that type of work, I just see it, it's getting broken a lot, and then. If you can fix it, or you have like employees that can fix that stuff, you're brave, you've got a shop can do that, but if you don't. You're at the mercy of, can they get us in three weeks, is it four weeks, how much is it gonna be, like?
If that does happen, then can you call someone and say, hey, can you come do like a one-time? Is that the thing?
To do.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, like, call someone and say, hey, can you come, not for the whole season, but just.
Sort of to them.
Hardest road, can you come, like, pay you basically?
Right. Right, well, right, we, I, I don't know exactly what the guys do over there, I know we've made in some of our stuff, I don't know how even that's into maintenance, we go, uh.
We've lost our advantage with electronics. The more electronics that we're seeing, any, but it's less fair to do, when you get down to the nuts, both of it, they're very.
But, yeah, well, a lot of these things are balanced, this equipment, I mean, you break something. You know, I risk a little bit, make an axe, screw it. Next thing you know, you're, now you're putting twenty-five hundred dollars bearings in, I put bearings in my machine here. I get a seventeen thousand dollar arbor that we can replace the bearings to put in. I mean, I'm telling you, in a perfect world, you look at the costs, and the equipment costs, if not, it does make sense. It, it does, the, it's the fuel, I mean, one of my rigs burns forty gallons a day. And then uses death. You know, that's. Yeah, sure, it's all, it's all factored in, but. I just, I just, you gotta.
But it's definitely not work, it's a lot harder than just saying, you gotta come do it, like, make sure you're there, it sounds like it's a.
It's really down to what I've been, and the price of the equipment. You know, uh, there's, I think, the starting point, uh, what would be the right piece of equipment to approach this way? Is it a mower, or is it, uh, actual, you know, a mini excavator, or? You know, I see it's taking a giant excavator.
It, it really depends on what you wanna do, I mean, what are you trying to do?
Uh, what, so, I mean, currently, we cut the brush inside of the mower, that doesn't go out again, we do that in-house, maybe that with chainsaws and pole saws. We maintain the sides of the bridges, uh, for our bridges, uh, which is done with the pole saw, but a guy won't get down over, uh. Right, our stuff in the ditch is done by guys in the ditch with a chainsaw, uh. Anything, right, we're, I mean, we put out the bid for ten feet, but I mean, there's spots where we'd like to get twelve feet or fifteen feet back, uh. Which would be nice, and I, I, I don't think, I mean, again, I don't really know, a sickle bar mower sounds. Like it would work for the moment, fortunately, but doesn't really do anything for us on our brush painting aspect.
Right, so, so you could do, like, on the excavator or the mulching head. You could do the brush, and you could do the mow, it would take you all summer. You would, you would rattle up a guy, driving that thing at one mile an hour, this far, doing a year, doing a year. A hundred miles, it would take you all summer, um, and then every time he hits a rock in the ditch. Or, it's fifty dollar too, you know, uh, like back to the maintenance part, and every time he sucks a piece of wire, hits. or it's fifty-dollar tooth, you know, uh like back to the maintenance part, and every time he sucks a piece of wire, hits whatever, kicks rock, hits a car gets tangled up in the light hole, and that's very, I mean, I mean, um there there's a million things that can go wrong, uh I bet just doing something fast, mull tractor, I mean, that guy's rolling around and put down, talk in debt, and you probably get up for thirty, forty grand, you exactly what that guy did. But it's not gonna do the twelve feet off the road, you know what I'm saying, that you're talking about different, there is.
Well, our bid was ten, and we see that we don't like five, cuz that doesn't really work.
Right, so he gave you a five price, right, and I get it back to the bid process, I did, when I put my bid in, I gave you by the acre, ten feet by mile, comes out to two point four comes out to two hundred and forty dollars an acre, by ten feet by the mile which came out to, I think, seven hundred and fifty dollars or no, a hundred dollars to me, I can't remember what the bid said, anyway, it was straight, if you if you, if the bid process would have changed and you could have actually asked different questions and I I I think you, if you told me eight feet or five feet, I would have given you a lot less price, you know what I'm saying, and then you could have like, you could have said well, what about in this section of the road, could we do ten feet? In this section, we do five, you know what I'm saying, that, I think it's very.
Put that out to bid, right, you can't.
Well, that's why you give that back, right, you, as in the bid process with this type of work, uh a building's different because you have dimensions, you've got sixteen inches on center, you've got, yeah, it's very easy, but with that kind of work, you you are painting a picture in your head, you're putting up in black and white, I'm reading it, and then I'm trying to paint a picture in my head. Those pictures could look way different, right, so when you put ten feet and the guy is thinking, well, I've got a five-foot mower I couldn't do that, it that doesn't make sense. You know what I'm saying?
Depending, I I don't know how some.
But there's a lot of places where that five-foot mower works, because you don't have, like Peterson, there's only five foot of ditch, I mean, and it's a bank.
One thing I've seen before for bid process like that is a walk, not necessarily a walk, but today's bid day, anybody that wants to bid shows up we take a drive with those people, you see, everybody sees exactly what needs to be done.
But the way this is done, you can do that at your own leisure.
Well, right, but you're gonna see actually that, yeah, ten feet's not gonna work, and those conversations can be had while you're there.
Right, right, I I kind of feel like if we're getting off topic, because it's not about whether we put it out to bid or not, we're talking about equipment and what we would use to do it in-house, if we have people that are, I and I don't know, I'm not crap on all the words, if we're having people to sweep the floor over there for thirty dollars a week, cuz there's nothing to do, it would be better than knowing the size of our own roads.
So I don't know what the new problem question, um can you, do you like go think of some equipment and break that for us?
Exactly.
I, you too, I don't know, you can start by first.
Yeah, you can, you you need to, you need to, what we want, what's most important? The second most important, and you need to know what you're gonna use these pieces of equipment for. I I have all my equipment in a system, I use it year-round, everything works year-round. Um.
I guess what you can to find out from towns who have similar roads is us, find out what they use and like what their maintenance looks like, is what I wanna know.
Is a tractor gonna be more useful, public works, or is an excavator gonna be more useful?
And we talked to public works. That would be mine.
Definitely out of my wheelance. So that's all I had with that.
And I don't think an excavator's feasible, uh uh cuz you, you know, if you get into a real one to be able to do it, those aren't gonna be cheap.
Not even a little bit.
Even smaller.
Don't think any aspect of this would be cheap, whether it's a tractor or an excavator.
An HP, is it still HP over there? Might have some suggestions.
Right.
In scaring, said, you know, they set up a lot of those with the side marks, but like that's probably not cheap.
Yeah, I mean, that's, well, yeah, I guess you've got big wire.
Yeah.
Maybe Gavin.
So he said, the tractor is the best, that five hundred or fifty thousand dollar one, that was a hundred and thirty horsepower tractor, John Deere. I bet you that's a hundred thirty, hundred and fifty thousand watt tractor, that was a flail mower on boom, so you pretty much drive it, you flip around, you drive it like this. That so, and it reaches twenty feet off the road, right, awesome, it's or, I bet she's, like I said, a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand, who knows how much she's got, best in that. It's a, so yes, if that's as simple as two hundred thousand and whatever it costs you a year that's, that would be the rig you need.
I don't know about our town three.
Right.
I don't know, we figure out how many years we're gonna.
Exactly.
The rear tire, you run over a long mower blade, so four grand from the tire. One.
I have an expensive, I mean, we just bought a two hundred point top on a truck, I mean, we don't use shovels because paws are expensive, right?
We're we're gonna stay plowing our roads, but.
He's looking into it.
Yeah.
Well, and that's really all I had, unless you see another opportunity for public works and equipment, I mean, that was the only thing I really had, and right I don't know if they have any use for an excavator at all, I, to be honest, don't know exactly what they do, so. Yeah, I don't know, I, what are we currently putting publics with the backhoe?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do they make something that would go right on our backhoe, you know what I mean, again, not not mine, we are, okay, thank you, that's all we have there. Uh and then, and the board anything else on? Uh right, other business? Have they any other business?
The other business, it's, Miss Cole, they graduate from earlier, Boop Gamba, she's home currently.
And she was super thankful for.
Nice. Well, who, he was a good idea.
We're kind of welcome.
All right, so a motion to approve and summon a letter to thank the Highlands Federal Ready Union in recognition of their agreement for the first year tax and strats for the part of our.
So much.
And a motion and a second, uh any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, so everybody.
Yeah.
And a motion to.
We'll add the um discussion action on the premises event license to the agenda for the Somerset Community Society. Um they look to change the event to more talk.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess so. Yeah, move to a more competitive event license.
Motion second, uh any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, it's everybody. Well, everybody, exactly, the discussion on labor and equipment.
And we're looking more than second session.
Thank you.
Did that part of it suppose?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so.
Nobody.
Is that when you were looking at me, you were waiting for me to be, be the bit in the butt?